Good morning and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners meeting. We welcome everyone that's here, and we'll begin with invocation, but before we do so, we ask that we please just have a moment of silence in honor of one of our community prominent leaders who passed away, Mr. Judge Attorney Buddy Welch. So if you will join me with a moment of silence in his honor, and then of course to lift up his family, we would appreciate that. Well, it's at this time that we're going to invite up Chaplain Ralph Easterwood, who's a chaplain with our Henry County Police Department, who's also the pastor emeritus with Glenhaven Baptist Church, to lead us in our invocation, and also afterwards we'll then have our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you so much. I count these pre-ligions in these times very precious to open up in prayer. Prayer changes things, and the prayer of a righteous person availeth much. So all that we do today and conduct our business, let us always remember that. Let the Lord lead us in what we say, and be gracious and kind in all of our opinions. Heavenly Father, we thank you today. This is a day that you have made, and the Bible says that we are to rejoice and be glad in it. And thank you, Lord. We woke up this morning, was able to get up, and Lord, that's a blessing. And all these precious folks that's come to the meeting today, the fact that we're here is a blessing to express our opinions and what we think should be done, Lord. And we thank you for the leadership in our county that still believes in the power of your word and the power and importance of prayer. So Lord, we just pray today that all decisions and all be saturated with the power of your word and with the leadership of your Spirit, Lord, and bless those that work so hard in our county to help keep it safe, Lord, and make it a pleasant place to be, Lord. We appreciate the opportunity that we have to pray, Lord, and just give them all divine guidance in the decisions they make, and all the decisions that's made this morning. We pray, Lord, that it would glorify your name and honor your name and cause our county to be a safer and a better place to be. For we ask these things in your precious name, in the name of our Lord and Savior, our Redeemer, in Jesus' name we pray, and all God's people said.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We were hereby now called the meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order, and at this time we do have one adjustment to our agenda, and it is that the executive session, which is item 15, will be removed. So at that time, are there any other changes or revisions to the agenda? Hearing, none. The floor is now open for a motion to accept the agenda with the amendment. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The agenda is accepted as amended. We're now moving to our proclamations, and we'll invite Ms. Melissa Robinson up to present our proclamations for today, beginning with our 2018 Fair Housing Month.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. This morning, we have two proclamations, and I'll read them consecutively, and then we'll have people come up for pictures. Our first proclamation this morning is a proclamation recognizing April as Fair Housing Month. Whereas in April of each year, the United States of America celebrates the signing of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, enacted under President Lyndon Johnson, following the aftermath of the assassination of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas Title VIII of the Act is commonly known as the Fair Housing Act. And whereas the Fair Housing Act enunciated a national policy prohibiting discrimination concerning the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, and as amended disability and familial status. And whereas April 11th, 2018, marks the 50th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act. And whereas April 4th, 2018, marks the 50th anniversary of the assassination of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas we come together as a community and as a nation to celebrate the anniversary of the passing of the Fair Housing Act and recommit to that goal, which inspired the nation in the aftermath of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s assassination, to eliminate housing discrimination and create equal opportunity in every community. And whereas illegal barriers to fair housing opportunities, no matter how subtle, diminish the rights of all. And whereas fair housing means that our communities are open and welcoming, free from housing discrimination and hostility, consisting of neighborhoods of opportunity where our children can attend quality schools, and our environment allows us to be healthy, and economic opportunities and self-sufficiency can grow. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, their commitment to fair housing is a living commitment, one that reflects the needs of America today and prepares us for a future of true integration. We hereby join in the national celebration by proclaiming April 2018 as Fair Housing Month and encourage all agencies, institutions, and individuals, public and private, in the county to abide by the letter and the spirit of the fair housing law. Signed this third day of April 2018 by Chair June Wood, attested by County Clerk Stephanie The second proclamation this morning is in recognition of National Crime Victims Rights Week, which is held April 8th through the 14th, 2018. Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 20 million crimes each year affecting individuals and communities. And whereas years of investment in crime victims' rights and services have developed a system of victim response that can help victims recover from crime. And whereas reaching and serving all victims of crime is essential to supporting thriving communities, because those who receive holistic services and support are more likely to remain invested in their communities. And whereas dedicated victim service providers are working every day to meet the needs of crime victims, yet there are still too many victims without meaningful access to rights and services. And whereas many victims face barriers, such as isolation, distrust of authorities, language limitations, lack of transportation, or cultural barriers that keep them from accessing the services and criminal justice systems that can help them recover from crime. And whereas we must make a dedicated effort to expand the circle of those prepared to respond to victims and link them to resources that can help them recover. And whereas engaging in a broader range of healthcare providers, community leaders, faith organizations, educators, and businesses can provide new links between victims and services that improve their safety, healing, and access to justice. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenging to reach or serve, are afforded their rights and receive a trauma-informed response. And whereas National -- and whereas the Henry County District Attorney, the Henry County Solicitor General, and their offices, as well as law enforcement agencies in Henry County, are hereby dedicated to strengthening the victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for justice for all victims and survivors. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that April 8th through 14th, 2018 shall be known as National Crime Victims Rights Week in Henry County, and they reaffirm this county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during this week and throughout the year, and express their gratitude and appreciation for those who provide services to victims of crime so that they may find assistance, support, justice, and peace. This third day of April 2018, signed by Chair June Wood, attested by County Clerk Stephanie Braun. And we have members of the DA's office and other law enforcement to come up for a picture.
Okay. So we now want our --
Yes, please.
Okay. Everyone, please, thank you.
Also, an increased presence on social media and some targeted campaigns as well. When people talk about economic development, they often talk in the context of industry clusters. Several years ago, the Development Authority commissioned a study done, and it identified four primary industry clusters for the county. An industry cluster is something, is nothing more than where you have a great concentration of assets, existing businesses, and also labor or talent to form a cluster, where there are supplier relationships and a number of different things. So advanced manufacturing, healthcare, logistics, and professional solutions were identified as the ideal industry clusters or industry targets for Henry County. But I would also like to point out that we are part of the metro Atlanta region, and we're also a part of the state of Georgia, and the economic development arms for those respective organizations have a broader swath of industry clusters. The Development Authority and also in the individual conversations that I've had with the Board of Commissioners, we all collectively agree that we want to do more to expand and broaden the industry base in Henry County. While we will continue to focus on these four key areas, we will also begin to explore the feasibility of attracting new industries here in Henry County. The film and entertainment industry has been growing all around us. We have had some great success in Henry County, but how do we have a more focused effort to attract film investment? In addition to that, there's been a boom in data center activity in the Atlanta metro area, and short of the very large announcement that was made a couple of weeks ago, data center activity south of I-20 in the metro area has not been as robust as in other areas. We believe that we may have opportunities that we want to continue to explore and others. But instead of just diving in and say, "We will be world-class in attracting this industry or that industry," we do want to take a methodical approach to figure out what makes sense for our county and what do we aspire to do and to be, understanding that it may be a years-long process. And in addition to that, as the county has grown its industrial base from a real estate standpoint for several years, one of the things that we recognize is that to attract more professional services types of opportunities, more professional services types of firms, that we have to have Class A office environments. And in the world of economic development, as companies are making those decisions, they typically will look to see what real estate asset is in place already, or where there are plans to build a Class A office building. And so, one of the things that we will be working with the county, the Development Authority, and other partners is identifying where in Henry County does it make sense to build a Class A office environment, that is mixed-use, that has different types of amenities that are appealing to a 21st century workforce. Oftentimes, people like to think that we purely focus on logistics and distribution, but these two pie charts show the project pipeline or the active projects that we have been working on. The first chart is pre-December 31st, 2017, and it shows that the majority of the projects that we worked on, leads that we generated ourselves, leads that we were able to work in tandem with our real estate partners, the Georgia Department of Economic Development and the Metro Atlanta Chamber of Commerce, advanced manufacturing and manufacturing represented over half of those projects. Logistics and distribution, approximately 28% of those projects, healthcare, 5%, professional solutions, 7%, and other, 2%. And since January 1st of this calendar year, again, those percentages are almost holding the same, again, with advanced manufacturing and manufacturing representing the lion's share of the projects. One of the things about Henry County in terms of talking with real estate developers, companies, and property owners is we are an ideal location for logistics types of projects. There is infrastructure that we continue to build on, our proximity to the interstate, Interstate 75, but also investors are building buildings on a speculative basis. And it would be irresponsible of us, as a Development Authority and as a staff, if we did not continue to actively pursue those opportunities to, again, make sure that the existing real estate and real estate that's coming online is actively absorbed, which helps to maintain the real estate values in our industrial sector. But again, at the same time, while we continue to shore up our base, I cannot overemphasize enough that we are looking to new opportunities as well to diversify the economy here. 2018, we have been off to a great start. A couple of weeks ago, we announced that Hydro Systems, which is headquartered in Valencia, California, they're establishing their east coast manufacturing facility here in Henry County. They are, they have actually purchased a new building, I'm sorry, an existing building on Highway 155, and they have started their process, working through the building and permits office, who has been absolutely phenomenal. I can't acknowledge George Patterson enough, he and his team, for the collaboration and the work that we've been able to do with them, to, again, just keep projects moving along. But they will have a vested stake in Henry County. Again, as they have purchased their building, they have started the process of hiring, and again, Hydro Systems, the company itself is family-owned, been around for decades, and they manufacture bathroom products such as stoves. You won't find a stove in a bathroom, such as, such as tubs and other bathroom fixtures. Just last week, week prior to that, we participated in the groundbreaking, the Southern Gateway at Lambert Farms. The P&amp;K Group is moving forward with a 260-acre industrial development. The first building out of the ground would be a 1.1 million square foot industrial building. The master plan for that development calls for over 3 million square feet of new industrial product. Again, the reason why projects like that are important is it allows us to aggressively market current, right-now opportunities in Henry County. And to take a step back also, and just to make mention on the logistics side, we have ramped up and have enhanced our efforts to be more attractive to e-commerce types of companies. Retail is not dying, it's just the way that people are choosing to purchase items has changed. If we were to ask how many people in the room, in the Board of Commissioners chambers today, has purchased something on Amazon, I would dare say 75 to 80% of the hands would raise someone who's purchased on Amazon in the past 30 days. As consumers, we are driving this activity. And again, we are doing more because the investment that a company is making oftentimes on the inside of the building is at least equal to, if not more, of the physical asset of the building and the property itself. And the individuals who are working in these environments are highly skilled in the work that they do, and oftentimes, we have, we have an older perception of what the logistics and distribution industry is still currently, when in fact, they are very highly automated systems and supply and inventory control systems that are in these facilities. But also, in terms of 2018, we're still working aggressively to establish the creation of Henry County's first community improvement district. We're enhancing communication of the Henry County Economic Development Opportunity. And ladies and gentlemen, we have a great story to tell. People are continuing to come to Henry County for a number of reasons. Companies are continuing to come to Henry County for a number of reasons, and we want to make sure that we are accurately and appropriately telling that story as often as we can. And one of the things that we have done as a staff, with the blessing of the Development Authority, is to create this simple snapshot, which shows what our results are for 2017, and on the rear, again, just pointing out and highlighting other things that help to enhance our ability to attract economic development investment. We're developing, as I mentioned, a strategy to create additional industry clusters, to grow additional clusters in Henry County, and also, each and every day, we are working to expand our project pipeline. So Henry County, you know, as our citizens are driving through, they may just see a bunch of buildings and not know exactly what's happening on the inside of them. This slide is a simple representation of some of the companies who have made the strategic decision to invest and do business in Henry County. These companies and the work that they do represent a significant investment in our tax role for our general fund. But oftentimes, what I've learned over my economic development career is people, unless they can think of a tangible connection that they have with the company, they may not understand the significance of it. For example, PVH is Phillips Van Huesen Clothing Company, Isid, and a number of other brands. We mentioned Luxottica. TSIS has an office off of Highway 20. They have a customer contact center. Leah and I had the opportunity to go to the Georgia Power Operations Center, Customer Care Center, last week. It is an absolutely phenomenal facility that they have there. The Home Depot, they have over 3 million square feet of space. A good portion of that is e-commerce fulfillment space here in Henry County, but the list goes on and on. Torrey Burch, Wayfair, Carter's, Summit Racing Equipment, Goya, again, the list goes on and on. And I'm really pleased to share with the Board and the citizens of Henry County that we anticipate being able to share more good news before the end of the second quarter, additional project activity that will add to the investment, add to the tax role, and add to the number of jobs that are being created. But again, on a personal note, I'd just like to thank each of you for being welcoming of me in this role here as the Executive Director for the Henry County Development Authority. I am very bullish on Henry County in terms of what we will be able to accomplish collaboratively, and also, I cannot say enough about Sherri and the rest of the staff, again, just how welcoming and how open they have been, and how, again, aggressively we are working to continue to improve the economic climate here in Henry County. That concludes my presentation, and I am glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Sledge. So, Will, now, are there any comments or questions from the Board? Commissioner Clemmons, and then Commissioner Barnum, then I'll speak as well.
First of all, I want to commend you, Leonard, and the Board and the staff at the Development Authority for your commitment to economic sustainability in the county. I had a question about how old the mission statement is for the Development Authority, and you don't have to answer that, but I'm concerned about the mission statement, because in the mission statement, it continues to talk about the expansion of existing industries in Henry County. And I'm really huge on economic development and following the state's mission. The state has revamped their mission quite often to include not only existing industries in the state of Georgia, but they also included small businesses in their mission, and they've also included expanding into other new industries. And that's something that I have not seen from our Development Authority. I know that, and I did see that on your chart. I saw that you guys looked from pre-2017 December, and then the new 2018, where there was a shift, where new industries were coming in, but in the mission statement, it doesn't state that. So I would just, you know, I would suggest that you guys go back and look at that mission statement, because it only speaks to expansion of existing industries. And I know that our constituents often see only manufacturing, or only logistics, or only warehousing, and we're not really seeing that in the mission statement. The state of Georgia has 18 different industries that they have on the Register for Georgia, and I noticed that you guys had in the pie chart about five, but they weren't in correlation with the 18 that are in the state's mission. So just looking at that, and so, my concern has always been, what are we doing to make sure that we are best-in-class in the state of Georgia and Henry County?
Yes, ma'am.
So I would just encourage the Board and the staff to go back and talk about, how old is that mission statement, and how can we look at our mission statement to talk about, to address small businesses and also new industries for this county?
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate the comment. In terms of the industry cluster, sometimes it's just the nomenclature that the state decides to use and what the Development Authority, through its study, has used. There is some alignment, but again, as that chart showed, the state of Georgia's breadth of industry targets, because they're covering the entire state, different strengths and weaknesses, and different strengths and opportunities as you go through the different parts of the state. But we will take a look at that, and again, as we mentioned, we are exploring, how do we, you know, the great thing is, is that there's activity already happening in these other areas, and so, that process, the feasibility process, okay, what makes sense for us as a county to begin to do a deep dive into, so that we can continue to leverage the great work that the state is doing and the metro area. In terms of small business, you're absolutely right. One of the, the, one of the projects, the Hydro Systems project, while I'm not sure of what their financials were, but they very well may be considered a small business, and so, we, you know, small business fluctuates in terms of what people's perceptions of them are. If you look at the U.S. Department of Commerce, the SBA designation, you know, some people might think, "Well, that's not really small." That's, that's a very, very large business. But I appreciate your comment, and we will take that back to the Development Authority, so that we can have some conversation and dialogue about what makes sense, what's the proper role for the Development Authority to continue to promote the growth of small businesses.
And just to encourage you all that, Henry County, what was good for Henry County 20 years ago, as we change as a county, we need to also look at our economic sustainability. Before the warehouses came, small businesses were here, and I believe that they're the lifeblood of this county. And so, just making sure that we're continuing to include the new models and the new things that are happening around the state, so that Henry can be best-in-class as well.
Yes, ma'am. And actually, one other thought just came to mind, Commissioner Clemmons. While it's not directly the work of the Development Authority, I am a member of the Board for One Henry, and one of the, one of the areas of focus for One Henry is small business or entrepreneurship, and there are efforts to create and establish a business incubator as well. But again, all to say, I take your comment to heart, and we will take a look at that.
All right. Commissioner Barnum?
Yes, Mrs. Sledge. I just want to commend you also for the job you're doing for Henry County. Every time I look around, I see you, and you're out there working hard for Henry County, and I certainly appreciate the Development Authority's board too as well, and just thank you for what you're doing for Henry County.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And my comments are very similar to both that of Commissioner Clemmons and Commissioner Barnum. Since the time you've been here, you're very, very much engaged, assessing apparently, and learning much about this county and even the state of Georgia, so we appreciate that. We appreciate the Development Authority as well, especially when we look at all of the businesses that we've had. And the thing that I did note, when you were speaking about your vision statement, I heard 21st century. So that, again, was a forward look that I was really glad to hear about. I'm glad to see that we were looking at the segments or sectors of our industries that we have, but you also made a strong note that we want to grow in other targeted industries such as healthcare and professional services, because we definitely need to balance our portfolio. I will share with those that are watching that, as I am interacting with those other Commissioners in other counties and other individuals and leaders across the state, Henry County is actually being envied for the industry that is coming, that is here, because there are announcements that have been continuously made. And when I think about the development that we've had and that we've experienced, I think about Tax Digest's positive impact, I think about jobs that are being created, and hopefully in a next update, we can talk about an average salary of those. But you did kind of address that when you talked about the increase of jobs and increase of median income, so commendations to that. One of the things that you did speak about was Highway 155. And I will tell you that if we, as a county, had planned, in my opinion, more aggressively regarding our infrastructure with more four or five lanes and great medians, and thankfully, we've got some good overlay districts that are now being acted, I think that definitely our community would better appreciate the great investments that are happening here in Henry County. So I just commend what we're doing. I did make a note of the word "collaboration." I did make a note that we are focusing on One Henry, which includes not just the business incubator, but we've got to do something around Highway 155, and that Community Improvement District is one by which the local owners there in the area will be looking to how they can make some investments to help us leverage more dollars, so that we can get some help at the federal, the state, and the local levels. So again, it's good to know where we are. You've been here how many months now?
This is the start of month five.
Month five. I appreciate what you're doing, appreciate what our Development Authority is doing, but more importantly, very excited about where we need to go, because we've got some work to do, and I appreciate, again, the teamwork that is happening, the teamwork that needs to continue to happen here. So glad that you're at the table with our county management team, glad we're working with other areas. Again, make a note of the community and the businesses that are here. I'm excited for Henry County, and I'm excited about where we're going to continue to grow, so, for the benefit of our Tax Digest and the jobs that we need for our employees now, and also for those of our children. So thank you again.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay. We will now move into our next update regarding animal control, and we invite Ms. Jerry Yoder from the Animal Control to make that presentation this morning.
Good morning, Chair Wood, Commissioners. I'm glad to be here this morning to give you a 2017 update of our Animal Care and Control Department, our animal shelter. Following Mr. Sledge, who's such a dynamic speaker, is a little disconcerting for me. I certainly don't have those, those well-polished skills. So our Animal Care and Control Department, we have a full staff of 14, including myself as director. We have a department supervisor, six animal care and control officers, four kennel masters, a dispatcher, and an administrative assistant. And while we may not be the most glamorous or the most polarizing department, we are a part of the Henry County Public Safety Cluster under the direct supervision of our Deputy County Manager, Brad Johnson. Our Animal Control Department does four basic things. To put it simply, we protect people from animals, we protect animals from people, we shelter lost, stray, and abandoned animals, and we also do public outreach and education. The first two of these are accomplished by the enforcement of our county's animal control ordinance. What many people may not realize is that our county department is responsible for enforcing the Henry County ordinances county line to county line. That includes all four of our incorporated cities. In 2017, we handled a little over 5,200 calls for animal control services. That included 434 calls inside the city limits of McDonough, 385 in the city limits of Stockbridge, 199 in the city limits of Locust Grove, and 181 in the city limits of Hampton. Our animal control officers, we only have six, they're on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And due to the staffing, after-hours, weekends, and holidays, we limit our animal control services to emergencies only. In 2017, the department issued 1,149 warnings for violations of county animal control ordinance and 215 citations for violations. The department is also responsible for enforcing state law and our county ordinance in regard to rabies control. State law does require that the county's Department of Health appoint a rabies control officer for our county. Our department supervisor, Vince Farah, received that appointment in 2008. Rabies control is outlined by the Georgia Department of Public Health's Rabies Control Manual, and we work in partnership with the Georgia Department, excuse me, the Georgia Public Health Laboratory and our Centers for Disease Control. In 2017, the department submitted 21 specimens for rabies testing to the Georgia Department, excuse me, the Georgia Public Health Laboratory. Of those six, of those 21, six came back positive for rabies. They were all in naturally occurring wildlife, there were five raccoons and a red fox. And in 2017, we also oversaw 197 10-day rabies quarantines for companion animals, dogs and cats, that had bitten a human. We oversaw three six-month quarantines for dogs that did not have a current rabies vaccine that had come into contact with a rabies-positive animal, and two 45-day quarantines for rabies-vaccinated dogs that had come into contact with a rabies-positive animal. And then, of course, as a byproduct of enforcing the county's animal control ordinance, you have to have a place to put the animals, hence the Henry County Animal Shelter. In 2017, our shelter housed 2,975 animals. When most people think of our department, they think of dogs and cats, but in actuality, if it's a legal animal to own in the state of Georgia, our animal control covers that. So that number includes horses, cows, goats, pigs, fowls, such as chickens, ducks, geese, turkeys, exotic pets, all manner of reptiles, exotic birds, to what we call pocket pets, ferrets, hamsters, rabbits, gerbils, mice and rats. And while indigenous wildlife falls under the purview of the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, we handle an awful lot of injured and orphaned wildlife. We're very lucky to have Noah's Art Wildlife Rehabilitation Center here in Locust Grove, as well as the Aware Wildlife Center in Decatur. All the animals that we handle that are not under the purview of animal control, we're very fortunate to have those two close to us that we can transfer those animals to. Our animal shelter is open to the public six days a week, and 2017, we had a total of 422 adoptions, 540 pets reclaimed by their owners, and 782 pets transferred to licensed rescue organization. The shelter also offers a number of outreach programs, including special adoption programs, education programs for schools, civic, social, and professional groups on a number of animal-related topics, humane animal care education programs that are used as alternative sentencing in magistrates court and state court. We also host three different low-cost spay-neuter and vaccination programs and a pet microchipping program. We're very happy to report that over 7,000 of our community pets have been spayed or neutered through our hosted low-cost clinics, and over 8,400 pets have been microchipped through our in-house microchipping program. And I'd like to note that all of our education and outreach programs are either self-funded or funded through donations, so they're at no cost to the county. So that's our 2017 update. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Commissioner Prince?
Hey, Jerry, thanks for coming in. I was sorry to hear about the American Bulldog Danger. I really thought he was going to make it, but...
We did too. Thank you so much. He was always special to us.
Yeah, he was a, he was a special dog. I'd love to tell the citizens a story, but it's a little... I do want to urge the citizens of Henry County, if you are looking for a pet, please go to Animal Control.
Thank you.
There are some wonderful dogs in there. I was by there a couple of weeks ago, and there's a couple of dogs in there that are really sweet and special, and they need good homes. And a dog that's been, been in some rough situations are very loyal. So if you get a chance and looking for an animal, please go by Animal Control and adopt a pet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Board? All right. Well, Ms. Yoder, we just do say thank you, and it is good that we're having these updates, so I appreciate that, because there is a lot of great teamwork that goes on behind the scenes that sometimes doesn't get the recognition, especially when we talk about public safety.
Thank you.
We say thank you, and thank you for helping to keep our communities safe as well, especially as it relates to the rabies. And I know we had a busy year, not a couple of months ago, when we had tigers and all sorts of things all over the place, and so, but we appreciate, again, all of the work that goes on behind the scenes.
Thank you.
And so, thank you to you and your team as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will now move into our consent agenda, and the following items are on the consent agenda, and we really have one that's regarding the Public Safety Henry County Police Department, and it's regarding a resolution to accept a grant in the amount of $70,000 from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for the Violence Against Women Project. So are there any, do you all wish to have this removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none, that concludes our consent agenda. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We're now moving to item eight regarding an airport resolution regarding some improvements to the crack seal and remark of the apron pavement at our Henry County Airport, and we'll invite Mr. Tony to come up for that presentation, and for the next couple of presentations, by the way. So, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Wood, Commissioners. Yeah, you're correct. I have a hat-trick of presentations up here. I have three back-to-back-to-back. So the first one I have, as you mentioned, is a resolution approving the bid award for the improvements to crack seal and remark the apron pavement at the Henry County Airport, located in Hampton, Georgia. And the first thing is, on June 22nd of 2017, and I'll put this up here. GDOT announced a tentative allocation of federal funding in the amount of a little over $1.8 million, and state funding assistance in the amount of $192,000, a little more than that, for the following projects at the Henry County Airport. One is the removal of the runway 24 displaced threshold and runway safety area improvements, and crack seal and remark of the apron pavement. And that GDOT require, contract requires, as you'll see on that tentative allocation letter, matching funds from Henry County in the amount of just over $132,000 to complete the projects. And on July of the same year, the next month, we confirmed our intent to, and proceeded with and fund those projects. And as a result, we utilized professional services of our airport consultant to prepare the design necessary for those projects, and sealed bids were solicited for the crack seal project, and bid documents were advertised in the Henry Herald and all of the other normal marketplaces. Seven sealed bids were received for the project, and the lowest responsive bid was received from Haskell Incorporated of Summerfield, North Carolina, at an overall cost of $54,275. And these are the sealed bid, or the bid tab. That shows the first four. A little hard to read with that. A little hard to read with that first one there, to the left, that are number one is So our recommendation to you today, Board, is to recommend award of that contract, uh, contract to Haskell, and encumber any funds necessary. And the thing also to understand, too, is the, the funding necessary for this project is also contingent upon receiving a contract with GDOT for that particular project and any other items related to that project.
Okay, well, thank you. We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments regarding this request? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into the second resolution regarding the approval for the removal of runway twenty-four displaced threshold and runway safety area improvements at, at the Henry County Airport.
All right. Much in the same as the first one, on that same date in June, we, and I'll put that letter back up, just showing that project. GDOT allocated funding, like I said, a little over one point eight million in federal funding and a little over a hundred and ninety-two thousand in state funding assistance for those two projects. The removal of displaced threshold is, is this presentation. And same thing as part of that contract, we are to have matching funds in the amount of a little over a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to complete those projects. And again, that same letter that we submitted back in July. We confirmed our intent to fund those projects. Same thing, our airport consultant was utilized to prepare the design for those projects, and sealed bids were solicited for the county, or from the county, and same thing, the bid documents were advertised in the Henry Herald and posted on respective marketplaces. In this case, six bit sealed bids were received, and the lowest responsive bid was received from Southeastern Site Development Incorporated of Noonan, Georgia, at an overall cost of nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. And again, the recommendation is to award that contract to Southeastern Site Development. Same thing as well, the contract will be in place with GDOT for, for that project, as well as any items related to that project. And I'll show the bid tab as well. A little bit longer here, might not be able to see all that, but again, the first bidder to the, to the left is, is the Southeastern Site Development. One thing to note, as, on both of these projects as well, the, the, we came in considerably lower than what was estimated for these two projects to be, so there's some, you know, some cost savings, if you will, associated with that. But obviously, the contract will be set up for the, for the cost of the project. And that's it.
Okay, we've heard the presentation for that resolution request. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll move to your next resolution regarding the acceptance of the disadvantaged business enterprise plan for the Henry County Airport for year 2018 through 2020.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and put, put it up, just to show the cover of the plan there, that's, that includes the actual plan. All right, and so I have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners authorizing the acceptance of the disadvantaged business interplay, enterprise plan, Part Twenty-Six, March twenty-eighth for the Henry County Airport, assuring compliance with Title Forty-Nine, Transportation, Subtitle A, Office of the Secretary of Transportation, Part Twenty-Six, Participation by Disadvantaged Business Enterprises in Department of Transportation Financial Assistance Programs of the Code of Federal Regulations. So we operate the Henry County Airport in Hampton, Georgia, and the, the Board of Commissioners is a recipient of federal funding assistance through the Airport Improvement Plan for the operation of that airport and, and for, for projects associated with that continued operation. With the Airport Improvement Plan, it's subject to USDOT Title Forty-Nine, Code of Federal Regulations, Part Twenty-Six, Participation by Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Requirements. And so it requires the airport to seek to include DBE businesses in contracting activities. And a qualified consultant prepared our disadvantaged business plan for the airport, and as a result, we're expecting, and I just mentioned those projects, we're expecting to award over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars during fiscal year 2018, and hopefully in the continued years as well, that plan will cover us through 2020. And so with that plan, it'll assure that we follow the DBE requirements that are set forth as a result of being recipient of federal funding assistance. And so I recommend that we authorize acceptance of that DBE plan for continued compliance with, with DBE requirements and for fiscal year 2018 through 2020.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Clemmons?
Michael, the two hundred and fifty thousand, that, that's not in compliance with the state, where did you come up with that number?
The, the two hundred and fifty thousand is just, it's just a, a broad number, if you, we're, we're just, I threw that number out, we're gonna be awarding more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, or we're gonna be, in, in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the total of the projects that we're, that we'll have for fiscal year eighteen. So in other words, with the combination of the, the two that I just mentioned, I think one was fifty-four, one was nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, so we're, we're well over that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if you will. I mean, I could've put two million, it, it's just, yeah.
Okay.
We're, obviously, we're on the hook for a, for a portion of that total, you know, based on that allocation letter and our confirmation to, you know, to, of funding those projects, but...
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, the resolution is approved. We'll now move into item nine regarding a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget for the unfunded pension actuarially, um, actual liability payment. So we'll invite up Ms. Angie Sorrow and also Ms. Laura Lynn Robinson to make that presentation. Good morning.
Good morning. You want me to start? Let me put my glasses on so I can see. Annually, we receive an actuary evaluation report for our defined benefit pension plan.
Barely here. Okay, thank you.
I know, I talks pretty softly, sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
Once a year, we receive an actuary evaluation report for our defined pension benefit plan, which is through Geb Corp. The report is based on information provided by Henry County's active and inactive participants data, which is based on January first, 2017. It's also has planned provisions that are set forth as of January first, 2017, and it also is based on the value of planned assets as furnished by the trustees as of January first, 2017. So the report that we're working on now is, of course, as of January first, 2017. The county did have an increase in contributions for 2017 versus 2016 of one point nine percent. The increase in the planned costs for 2017 are due to several factors, and I'm gonna go through those with you, and there's three here. The first one is due to the decrease in the assumed investment return from seven point five percent to seven point two-five percent. Also, salary increases and excess of the assumed four percent that they projected rate. There was more growth in the active participant population found in public safety groups that has more generous benefits. The number of general employees grew by five point eight percent, and the total compensation for the general employees grew by six point three percent. In comparison, the number of public safety employees grew by ten point three percent, and the total compensation for the public safety employees grew by ten point two percent. So therefore, that's the reasons for the increase in the plan or the contribution from 2017 to 2016. In your packet, you should have a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2018 budget requesting an increased use of fund balance and transfer of funds from unallocated to pension benefits for unfunded pension liability payments. Do you wanna go over that? Is that your summary?
You have before you a budget amendment, taking nine hundred thousand from unallocated retirement, also five hundred thousand in restricted fund balance that we had originally budgeted, and then we are asking for an increase of use of fund balance in the amount of one million, ninety-five thousand, nine seventeen. We are looking to get that budget amendment approved so that we may forward the payment on to Geb Corp.
Okay, you've heard the presentations. Are there any questions or comments by the board? Okay, you have a question or a comment? Okay. Okay.
The nine hundred thousand budgeted and unallocated, explain to me that, I, I'm just a little curious, I'm gonna make sure we're not dipping into somebody else's retirement here.
No, sir. When we originally budgeted this last year during the budget process, we were under the assumption that we were looking at a roughly increase of nine hundred thousand dollars. So what we do is we put it into unallocated until we get the actuarial, the actuarial report, said that wrong, and then we move it to the HR Department so we can pay the payment. But after we did year-end budget and looking at the payments that we have paid for fiscal years sixteen and seventeen, we needed an additional five hundred thousand, and that's why we reserved five hundred thousand in the CAFER, the year-end audit.
Are we looking at an increase like this coming up in, in the next year?
Yes, sir. We have already in our proposed 2019 budget, we've increased the contribution from eight point eight percent to thirteen point one percent.
What's that look like?
Which is recommended. If you look at the last page of the agenda item, this is a certificate from Geb Corp, and they recommend thirteen point one percent, and this will help out with the unfunded amount that we have.
Okay, thank you.
I'm chair and Commissioners, I do wanna kinda echo in on the comments that Angie and Laura Lynn has been presenting this morning. This has been no surprise to management or to our budget team, because over the course of the last couple of years, we haven't actually budgeted what the recommended amount should have been. And so every year, we've had to come before the board, amend the budget, and then ask you all to do this. We're not wanting to operate that way, and so we've taken some steps. We've had several meetings internally, and most recently, met with our Geb Corp representative to ask him for some direction in terms of how do we get out of the situation that we're in. One of the things that we've done most recently is we've assembled a pension advisory committee so that they can help us go through the actual Geb Corp document and then make some recommendations to the management team that we can then bring forth to the board. But the directive that we've given our team is that we've got to make sure going forward that the recommended amount is what we budget for, because we don't like hav- having to come before you all to ask for it. The unfortunate part about it, and I regret that we're having to do it on this meeting agenda, we were notified a week and a half ago that the funds were due by March thirty-first. And so we had no preparation, we were not in a position to move those funds without an approval from the board, which is why it's coming to you all on this agenda without going through the workshop. So again, we respectfully ask that you all do move to approve it, but wanted to make you all aware that we have already taken some necessary steps to, going forward, so that we're not here again next year.
All right, well, any other questions or comments? I do wanna say thank you for the clarification that this just didn't happen overnight, two, that we are gonna be looking forward to make sure that we are planning for as much as possible. You can't plan for everything, but we've got to begin thinking ahead and planning ahead as best as possible, so we appreciate the clarification. Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes our business portion of our meeting today, and right now, we're moving to our public comments. And again, everyone who's requested to speak has completed a form with the county clerk to sign in. We do ask that you please direct your comments to the Board of Directors, Board of Commissioners here, and please, if you have any individual comments, please direct those after time with those individuals. But again, please direct your comments to the board. We do ask that you be professional and respectful as we continue to carry out the business of this county. So how many public comments do we have? County clerk?
Chair, there are five for today. It is Bill Tony, Robert Hohenstein, Carl Swenson, Margaret Avera, and Larry Maury.
Okay, thank you. Each person coming to speak will be granted five minutes to speak, so thank you very much.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to make some suggestions on this to the board. I talked to Brad earlier and about maybe having some forums with these ladies to come forward, like with Gigi's House and all that. I think she's maybe talked to, I don't know if she's talked to you yet or not, but is getting something going, maybe to where we can have some town hall meetings, to where we can do it in your own districts, or have one here at the administration building, you've got the facility to, to do it. So these things are so, so important to where I think the public needs to be aware of what's going on in the county and everywhere else, as far as, as trafficking these kids, and it's, it's just, people need to get involved in this one.
Last meeting I brought up about Mr. Prince dressing up like a police officer. Well, when Stockbridge was thinking about getting their own police department, this is from April fifteenth of 2016, this is Mr. Prince's words, "These are very dangerous proposals, and this is about having the, the security guards and everything that were patrolling," I guess you'd say, that the city of Stockbridge hired. He said, "This is very, very dangerous proposal, and these are just private citizens carrying guns." Well, as far as I know, other than being a Commissioner, Mr. Prince is a private citizen. Now, he, I can't tell him from any difference than the rest of them. He's dressed as a police officer, which I think, if I'm not mistaken, is against the Now, in, in this picture, and this is his pictures, the one on the bottom right, it appears that he has handcuffs and guns. Now, I'm not a hundred percent, but it looks like it to me. Anybody can, if anybody wants a copy of this picture, I'd be more than happy to give it to them. the penalty, up to one hun- a one thousand dollar fine, up to five years in prison for impersonating a police officer. I don't, I don't think that, I'll be honest with you, I think Mr. Prince, I don't know how stable he is, but I think he probably should step down off the board. And I think that the police officers have showed enough evidence, they need to do their jobs. Thank you.
Our next person? Good morning, if you will state your name and address for the- If you would state your name and address for the records, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ms. Wood. My name is Robert Hohenstein. Tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a retired military veteran, and I'm also a retired Henry County Police Officer. I just want to give a few remarks this morning. And first off is commend the Board of Commissioners on their appointment of Chief Mark Ammerman here recently. And also, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners also, with myself being a military veteran and being a part of several veterans organizations that you guys signed in for the Veterans Resource Court here recently. Another thing I'd like to remark on too is some of the stuff that I heard from last meeting and, of course, from this meeting too. And this is going to be directed towards Commissioner Blake Prince.
Okay, sorry if you can direct it to the Board of Directors, the Board of Commissioners, please.
Over the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, please, thank you.
And it's in reference to him impersonating a police officer. As, as we've just seen, that we looked at Georgia State Code, Official Court of Georgia annotated sixteen, ten, twenty-three. It says impersonating a public officer or a public employee. I too have looked at some of those pictures that have been posted on Facebook and, and found nothing wrong with them. In fact, they have, they have all been clearly posted where it says that he is a Commissioner of Henry County. Anytime that you look at those pictures really closely, Commissioner Prince is not wearing a gun. And his attire clearly states that he is a Commissioner. And I'd just like to put that on record and put that out in front of all Henry County citizens that, that Commissioner Prince did not impersonate a police officer. Thank you.
Good morning. If you would state your name and address for the records, please.
My name is Carl Swenson. As you know, I'm from Stockbridge, the unincorporated part. I want to thank you for the little slip up here, Ms. Wood, when you referred to yourselves as the Board of Directors. But it brings up a little bit of a sticky wicket that's happening at the, at the federal level. You see, everything is being revealed now that was hid before, being revealed by the likes of alphabet agencies, not the least of which is the FBI, okay? And the Director Comey, McCabe, and that whole mess that's going on up there. What we're finding is that there is a dual system of justice. Kind of on display here too. Dual system. What is obvious to citizens, not the public, because I think there's a problem that all of us need to understand. When you guys refer to serving the public, you're not referring to serving the citizens of this county. You're referring to serving the people that work for the county, that work for the government, that work for that shadow organization. And you may ask, what is the shadow organization? Okay. The Development Authority, the Water Authority, a group that has unlimited power but nobody knows about, the senior, executive, services. Do you know how many of those we have in Henry County? Do you know that a new center is being put up there, a cybersecurity center in Eagles Landing? Do you know that? For what benefit? Not to look on the public because as we see, there's a dual system of justice, but to look on the private citizens, to keep them in line, to control. And that's what we're talking about. You guys control our taxes. We don't. We think we elect you, but we don't elect you to serve us. Unfortunately, we elect you to serve yourselves. And something is going on in this county, something very, very serious that you don't seem to be taking serious. It's just a, an aggravation. Mr. Tony didn't put this stuff up here just because it's something to do. No, this is a very, very serious item. I hear people in this group say, "It's all about the children. It's about the children." Yeah, keep using those words because I don't see anything serious happening here. Yes, we do need town halls. Yes, we do need to find out where these kids are being stored here in this county. They're being warehoused in our county. Rotating warehouses, houses, business districts. I don't know. You don't know, but we better know. You're making this a logistics, i.e. trucking center, thank you very much, Development Authority, making this trafficking that much easier in our county. You're trying to make this Atlanta South. Great job because Atlanta is one of the main hubs for this trafficking. We don't want that. The, I mean, the citizens don't want that. I don't know about the public here, but the citizens don't want this in our midst. And it is your responsibility to serve and protect. And curiously, some of the very people that you say you're supposed to serve are going to be victims of this very same heinous crime because it doesn't stop there. We have a massive problem of pedophilia which is becoming ever more visible to the people here, and we are going to address this a little more. I'm very upset, very upset, that none of this is being taken seriously, that crimes are being swept under the rug because we have a dual system of justice. It's great for you because no matter what you do, no matter what the appointed do, they won't be held accountable. But the citizens will. I want you to keep that in mind when you make your rulings. Who are you really representing? Start representing them.
Good morning. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Larry Morey with the Ethics in Government. I personally want to thank the Development Authority for being such hard workers and doing such a fine job of turning Henry County into a glorified truck stop. If we keep going, we're going to have more cars than we've got trucks. Second thing, since, since our court system is here represented, I would, instead of walling off the DA's office, I think we ought to create a special criminal grand jury so that people, individuals, citizens, taxpayers can come to that grand jury once a month and report things that they know of in the county, and they have to back it up with, with some evidence. I think that grand jury ought to be accessible to that voter. I don't think it should be the right of one man to determine what's wrong and right in this county. I think it ought to be up to a grand jury of our peers that can make that decision. I ain't got nothing against the DA, but I just think it's, it's, we don't have a, an authoritative government. We have a democracy, and we need to let that special grand jury decide what's right and wrong. Now, we had a gentleman up here just talk about dressing and impersonating a policeman. I personally ain't got nothing wrong with one of you guys driving, riding in a police car. I personally ain't got nothing wrong with one of you walking in a parade. But you don't need to be dressed as a policeman, and you don't need to be projecting yourself just for political reasons as a police officer or armed or bulletproof vest. Y'all are a Commissioner, and you need to act more professional as Commissioner and not be, not be graying the lines in between. But be professional and, and just wear your suit and tie like you are this morning, or you're dressed up dresses, and let that be it. Now, the last thing I'm going to cover is insurance. You know, this is really puzzling me because for the last three years, I've, I brought it up and I, I, we still aren't bidding it out. You may tell the public you are, but you're not because your paperwork don't prove that. We still mismatch and, and what, what surprises me is you guys have insurance with the county, and your coverage is getting more mixed. Yesterday, for instance, Blue Cross Blue Shield quit with Piedmont Health. I couldn't even get a appointment with a doctor yesterday afternoon. We, our insurance is getting more and more confusing and less coverage daily, and, and we, we quit bidding it out. We negotiated. I, I brought in a professional, there's twelve points of interest. Now, I didn't, I didn't do this because Larry Morey decided to do it. I tried to get everybody to, to let this guy come in and sit in with y'all. He's probably the most decorated insurance in Henry County. There's his credentials. Looks like a Christmas tree. He said there's twelve things that just sticks out like a red flag about the way you're doing insurance. We brought this up last year. He says it's worse this year. That's, that shocks me that, that the board won't sit down with somebody that's got those credentials, that's a taxpayer in this county, and won't check out what he says is wrong. He says twelve things are major problems with the insurance. You know, they say if you stick your head in the ground long enough, you're going to come up with a different solution. I don't believe that. I believe we need to address the situation, and I believe you'll find out that he's got some answers to the problems that you face in your insurance. And some of it may be criminal. Thank you.
Good morning. If you would state your name and address for the records, please.
Good morning. My name is Margaret Avera. I live at three-ten Royal Street in McDonough in the Orleans Place subdivision. Good morning, Ms. Clemmons. So I'd like to thank all of you for your services, our elected officials. I know it's easy for everybody to get up here and kind of slam. I know during times like this, sometimes all the right decisions that you do make can give way to what some people perceive as a misguided or a wrong decision, and I know that these are tough decisions that you make. On that note, I would like to address you guys on the dismissal of Chief Nish Willis. I know on the Tuesday before her dismissal, in an executive session, changes were discussed, and in the defense of, of our Commissioners, I don't think you expected the guillotine to be delivered Wednesday morning. I do believe that y'all were misled and believe that there was going to be a process put in place. The only reason the public has been given, your constituents, your voters, the people that keep you in the seats that you're in, the only reason they were given is that the department wasn't, wasn't going as expected. What exactly did you expect? The board hired Chief Nish Willis to create change, create diversity in the department, have a department that was progressive, who could create a department that improved our community, and reflects the diversity that we have as a county that makes us great. I know that it's not popular, but I happen to agree with a lot of the change that is being made as far as our progress with industry. We've already built these warehouses. Well, let's fill them up. That's how I feel about it. So Chief Nish held the ideal that it was better to help firefighters succeed and retain them rather to go with a higher in fire status, or the type of attitude that has been echoed in previous administrations. It costs approximately seventy thousand dollars to hire, train, outfit, uniform, somebody from the street all the way through EMT. This doesn't include paramedic. By the way, I want to, retaining this dollars is paramount, but I'd also like for you to know that I'm a recruitment retention officer previously for Metro Atlanta EMS Department, so I know what I'm talking about when I, when I bring these figures. As a citizen of this county, as a paramedic in Metro Atlanta, as a former recruitment retention officer, I can tell you Chief Nish made an impact from Henry County that rippled through the Metro Atlanta area. At a time when we see a shortage of thirty-eight percent nationwide for paramedics, we had many in the Atlanta area leaving private service to come work here at Henry County under Chief Nish. So as, as the wife of firefighter, it's, it's not a big secret, and a member of the firefighter's wives, I can tell you that the improved morale and positive changes were the talk of Saturday night suburbs and barbecues that were held with firefighters. Since her dismissal, fear of things returning to what they once were now dominate these conversations. Many want to speak about their fears, but they fear retaliation of the current administration who have made it clear that firefighters work at their pleasure. Not really conclusive for a high morale department. And then, we have the continued suspension of Assistant Chief Sherwood, again, with no substantial reason other than the support of Nish Willis. Tell me how this can install, how can this install support and confidence to the ranks? Chief Nish's accomplishments include working with Chief McBrayer to obtain fourteen thousand dollars of seized drug money for, to create an honor guard or to enhance our honor guard. Multiple companies she reached out to in the name of the Henry County Works Project to compensate improvements in the fire department. Improved morale, making sure the men and women of the department know they were supported and in a path of, place of, and there is a path in place to create exact change. Diversity in the department, probably the most important, not just on the fire line but by implementing testing processes that identify strengths in our firefighters as a whole and promoting those who work hard to improve the department. She made a safer environment by putting three men on a truck instead of two. As a wife, I can tell you that I slept better at night. I ask you, if this is not the right direction, improved morale, more equipment, better equipment, more stations, more diversity, fewer lawsuits costing the county money, then exactly what direction is it that you want this fire department to go? I respectfully request as a taxpayer that we reevaluate one person being over our public safety department. I think we should look at creating a board that includes one person from each of those departments, the police, the fire, the animal control, et cetera, weighing in on decisions, giving that one person with the ability to make-
Thank you. I think you're out of time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I appreciate your comments.
I would like to thank you for returning my email though, both of y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our public comments section of our agenda. We'll now move into item eleven regarding the approval of the minutes for the March twentieth regular Board of Commissioners meeting and also the March twenty-seventh call meeting with the Georgia Department of Transportation. Are there any revisions or comments regarding the minutes? Here are none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? We're now moving to the Commissioner comments section. Are there any comments from the Commissioners? Commissioner Clemmons?
I just want to say to the young ladies that came out today with me, I've got little girls that were in camp this week, just want to wave at you all.
Commissioner Barr?
Okay. Well, as you noted, we did have a joint meeting with the Georgia Department of Transportation, and I've asked staff if they will come in the future to present some highlights of what the transportation projects that were discussed. But one of the highlights that I did want to place on record is that during that Georgia Department of Transportation meeting, the Georgia Department of Transportation stated that there are more Henry County G-DOT projects going on here in Henry County than in the rest of the state of Georgia. So that was to be noted. The other thing that I do want to share with, I've asked staff to also talk, include some of the updates that will come from the projects that were submitted and approved by the Board of Commissioners, the five projects that were submitted for priority. There has been an amendment four, and two of our projects which we'll discuss, the one that's our quarry road expansion from Eagles Landing Parkway to Highway one thirty-eight North, Henry Boulevard has been approved. Also, the other project along twenty-eighty-one from Lemon Street to South Bethany Road that has been approved, and the three remaining projects that we submitted is being considered for the amendment five, and more information to come on that as we proceed. So more- So, more information about all of our projects to be forthcoming. While we were in the meeting, the Georgia Department of Transportation Board members did ask that we just share with our communities more about the most recent push to encourage everyone to drive alert and arrive alive. You've probably seen some of these commercials on the news, just encouraging us all to drive safely, especially remove our texting driving, and even spoke about the number of fatalities that have occurred throughout the state of Georgia. But even here in Henry County, in 2017, we had 30 fatalities, and in 2016, we had 26. Great news in that the trend is going down, but we have so far only five, but we do want to improve better in that way. So, we do ask that if people, please do pay attention in your safety. This has been a great day to talk about public safety in other ways, in so many different ways, and we just encourage everyone to please do that. One other note I do want to make to our staff is that while at the Atlanta Region Commission, it has been stated that you all have been so cooperative in getting the information there, answered questions, forms completed, so that we're able to at least get the consideration of the projects that have been moving forward. So, again, wanted to commend you all for that and appreciate all of the teamwork that continues to happen here in this county. So, those are any of my comments, any others at this time? Here are none. We'll move into the announcements regarding our upcoming meetings and events. On April the 17th at 6:30 PM, there will be a Regular Board of Commissioners Meeting. And then on April the 24th at 9 o'clock AM, there will be a workshop. And I need to go back to the county manager's comments, so I apologize for skipping through that and omitting that. So, we'll invite Sherry Matthews to come forward on that.
Good morning. And I know we, some of us have an appointment immediately following this, so I will try to go as quickly as possible. But I did want to share with the Board some of the good things that have been going on here, and just to make you all aware, in case your constituents are asking, we too take human trafficking very serious, and I appreciate Mr. Tony and Mr. Swanson for bringing it forward to the county, because it has made us more aware and really made us want to get more involved. Our Police Department actually has an active group that deals with child crimes, that they are, they've been in some conversations, not only with Sabrina Crawford from Gigi's House, but also Pretty Griffith, who also works very closely with Sabrina Crawford. And I will tell you, we have a problem here in Henry County. We recognize it, and I think the first order of business is we've got to get the public involved, get the citizens involved, and maybe look at creating some type of task force so that we can start having the conversations. One thing that we noted is that we've got to get the Board of Education at the table as well, because it's the number of students and middle and high school age girls that are involved in this trafficking. And I think a lot of people are in denial in terms of it can't happen in Henry County, but it is happening, and we've heard example after example. So, that is something that in the next 30 to 45 days, we will be bringing something to the Board in terms of a recommendation on some next steps. So, I wanted everyone to hear that. Also, wanted to make the Board aware that we've identified some funding sources within this year's fiscal year, and you will start to see some park improvements happening. Most notably, the Board recently adopted the Master Plan for Nash Farm, and we've identified some funding sources where we can kick that off and start doing some of those major projects, and then looking at some of the other areas in the county. We have some tennis courts that are in dire need of some improvements, and so we are looking to make those improvements happen as well, and we'll be bringing that list to the Board. And then I also just wanted to give a kudos to our Police Department. Two weeks ago, Friday, we actually graduated five new officers to our Police Department, which is huge for us, and we actually have 10 new individuals that will be starting in the academy. So, we are keeping our numbers at a very low number, but we're also seeing that more and more people are wanting to come to our Police Department and work, and I certainly credit that to the leadership within the department. And then finally, as you all know, we've had our radio system that was funded through our SPOSS program. We're about 90% there in terms of getting that project completed, and I wanted to thank Don Ashenrun Burkholtzer and his entire SPOSS team for getting that almost to the finish line. That's all my comments for this morning, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. You can address questions after the meeting. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, regarding our agenda, our executive session was removed from the agenda, so we're now open for a motion for adjournment.
So, move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Consider the meeting adjourned, and thank you again for participating in today's Board of Commissioners Meeting. Thank you.